All right, we've got six thirty, so we'll go and call the meeting to order. Second agenda item is public comments, so we've got fifteen minutes if there's anybody in the room that wants to speak. You can straight up to the mic, just give me your name. Not seeing a mad rush, we'll move on. Uh, gender review, does anybody have anything?
We could add nine B for technology trust. I have a proposal from Josh.
Okay, anybody else? Going once? Okay. All right, uh, Jenna, I'm number four is a unique one, so as everybody's aware, um, we were without a treasurer. So we've had some people from the community submit their interest. Um, it looks like not all of them are here tonight, but a few. Do, has everybody looked over the sheets in the drive? Do we want to, um, give each one of them a couple of minutes to say why they're interested and whatnot? Um, so I should probably do this in alphabetical order, or at least the order that in it's in the drive, so, um, oh, I'm going to butcher this name. If if Amanda Alksenite Sinidis, is it, she's not here, okay. Ms. Door. That's an easy one, thank you, appreciate it.
Not me. Hi, everybody, I'm Jen Door. I'm interested in the position, it's kind of, it's what I do. I'm a municipal auditor, I've been at my firm for twenty seven years this July. And so I audit school districts and towns and nonprofits and a few corporations throughout the state. Numbers are kind of my thing, it's what I like to do. I volunteered in a bunch of organizations through the town, I've been treasurer, it runs at the library, PALS, I was president of PALS for a few years, and my kids are older now, and my last one's a freshman in high school, so a little time on my hands and figured I maybe would step up and try to help out in another way.
Awesome. Anybody have any questions? Okay. Uh, I'll just say Tony, because I'm not sure how to pronounce your last name either, I should by now.
That's all right. Tony McNeveitch, uh, Fourth Range Road. Um, I was looking at the position, uh, one of my children are getting older, I have four of them here in high school currently. Um, they're getting jobs and I have some more free time available. Um, though I did, I'm in the tech industry now. Um, my school was actually for, I went to the Whitemore School of Business at UNH. Um, so well aware of accounting practices, uh, just not involved with it currently. As I have a good job in the tech sector, that's keeping me fairly happy. Um, yeah, just looking to do my part to try to help out here in Pembroke.
Awesome, any questions? Okay, thank you. Loading. Is it, is it Palacios? Ah, it's close, thank you. Uh, well, it didn't load, so I couldn't remember his first name.
Lou, uh, my name is Kenneth Palacios. Uh, my family has lived in Pembroke for over five years now. Uh, I just got medically discharged from the army about a year ago. Uh, I spent twelve years in the army as a paralegal, so I am very skilled when it comes to understanding the law and its application to a lot of different sectors. I also, excuse me, assisted in the maintenance and bookkeeping of multimillion dollar accounts for arm, um, equipment and vehicles and other fancy military grade stuff. My kids have been treated very well so far in the school district, and I just want to do my part and give back however I can and, uh, use my skill set to do it exceptionally. Thank you.
Thank you. So I haven't had one of these, an appointment for anybody but a board member in my time here, so I don't, I'm not entirely sure how this works, should we discuss this in non-public, or it's? Okay, does anybody have any comments right off the bat?
I, I think maybe Carrie would be maybe the best one to explain, you know, in some, you know, sort of detail what it requires, if everybody's aware too. I mean, I don't, I don't know, that's just my thought.
I know, I, I'm just, I'm, did you send the roles and responsibilities to everybody? So they, they kind of have the overview, um, sorry, is this on? Um, good, thank you. I'm new at this, no, I'm just kidding. Um, so it's, I, I think I mentioned at the last meeting, it's, um, balancing the checkbook, it's like you do at home, it's just a little bit with a little bit more money than you have at home. Um, it's running deposits, it's approving the manifest, um, on Wednesdays, most weeks on Wednesdays, um, is an AP uh, manifest that comes out, you have to approve it, just with your signature, it's docu-signed, so it's all electronic, very quick. Um, and then every other week is also the, I'm looking at Melanie like she's going to tell me something, I'm sorry. Every other week is the payroll one, so that one's the one that's good, that needs to get approved. It's pretty straightforward, I know we're trying to get the audits caught up so that we can get that starting number for this year, so we're kind of, I'm just been accumulating everything that's been coming in. So I have it all and I'm ready to hand it over to whoever is going to take it.
Any other comments, opinions, questions for people? I'm honestly just shocked that we have four people, so grateful.
Um, I was just going to say that I think I like what Kenneth Palacios brings to the table in terms of what I understand it means to be, um, uh, military personnel and the scrutiny to which that budget and, excuse me, and bookkeeping, requirements entails, and I think that that would be really transferable to what this needs. Would be one part of my thinking. The other part of my thinking is that I'm still working my way through reading the Pembroke Annual Town Report. And I just finished reading the section about the plea for volunteers for old home days. So those of you saying that you have extra time on your hands who don't land this wonderful volunteer gig, I might commend you that way.
Others?
Andy, if I can.
Absolutely.
I, I have, um, in the PALS situation, I've worked with Jen, I also know that she and I have worked well together, just kind of, she's, she kind of volunteered to help me with some of the treasury stuff if I had questions. I personally would just feel really comfortable, and it's nothing against anybody else, it's just her being in the auditing sect, sector of everything, I feel like she would be the one. And that's just my opinion, and I don't know if I need to make more of a nomination, or if I, how does this work?
The nomination is a motion, thank you, sir.
Okay. All right, well, I'm gonna, I, I move to nominate Jen Door for a treasurer position.
Okay, for a second before we just go?
I'll second.
Right? Last chance for discussion then, I guess? I would say I don't, you know, I don't have strong feelings in any direction, I, like I said, I'm happy that people are volunteering. Um, I do know that Ms. Door has been, uh, attended at the, the meetings and everything in the past and, um, generally, you know, keeps an eye on what's going on, so that's good. Um, but yeah, I'm.
I don't have strong feelings either, like, I don't know a lot about the position, so thank you, Carrie, for all that. But I do really like that Tony also put in his application, because he has attended quite a bit of school meetings and is very involved in all of our annual meetings and reads every single line of our budget, so I do appreciate that too, just an opinion.
Anything else? Okay, so we do have a motion or a nomination and a second, um, for Jen Door, so I guess we'll go ahead and do, uh, I guess we'll do a roll call vote, just so we've got it on the record, Carrie?
Yes.
Amy?
I'm going to abstain.
Melanie?
We have three volunteers sitting in front of us. Ah, yeah, I appreciate everyone being here. Um, as far as background goes, I think Jen probably has the best qualifications for the position. But you all obviously have qualifications for the position, so, uh, at this, I'll have to vote yes for Jen.
And I'm a yes as well, so that takes care of it. Thank you again, everybody that showed interest, um, and yeah, there's definitely, if you're looking to volunteer, to Amy's point, there's definitely other things, I'm in town. I believe, I think Gene will let us know at, at the NBC report in a little bit, that I believe there's going to be an opening on the Budget Committee this fall as well. That's an important position too, so, thank you very much. Um, and Carrie will coordinate with Jen to do handoff and everything.
I will.
Now, uh, Shoffy has sworn in, is that a sworn position, so, um, you want me to reach out to Tom, or? Oh, that's right, I always forget that I can do it, I, um, I was gonna say, we can, yeah, I, no. Yeah, okay, um, that, I'll either get in touch with you or, or get in touch with Tom Seraphin and have him get in touch with you, whatever, sometime in the next week, we'll get it figured out. Awesome. Yeah, I just thought of that on the drive over. Um.
I'm just curious, are, are you gonna stick around for a little while till we get to the, okay? Good, so I just wanted to.
Cool, okay, um, that brings us to agenda item number five, which is minutes, we've got two sets, April fourth and April eighteen. If there's corrections, we'll take them separately, if everybody's good, we can do them as a group, I'll take a motion for either or both.
A motion to approve the minutes of April fourth and April eighteen.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, is there a discussion on either one? All right, then all in favor of approving the minutes of April fourth and April eighteenth, twenty twenty-three, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Fantastic, okay, um, so that brings us to agenda item number six, our board reports, and we do have our student senate rep this afternoon.
Um, so basically what we've been doing recently in student senate is, well, we just had, um, voting for next year's officers, so today we actually, um, had them come to their first meeting, see what it was gonna be like, and then, you know, we kind of got them acclimated and they kind of know what to expect for next year, which is cool. And then basically what we've been working on is we usually kind of have like a spring like field day. So, um, the, the club split into three separate groups, kind of one for scheduling and then one for like events that maybe will be like scored, or depending on what we decide to do, and then we have some other, we have another group that's maybe doing just side events for people who don't necessarily want to do like particular things, so we've just kind of been dividing and conquering on those separate things, and I'm looking forward to that, um, spring field day, so that's what we've been working on.
Awesome, thank you, any questions for Jake? All right, thanks for joining us this evening.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Coughlin.
Good evening. Uh, the, we've been pretty busy since the last report over the last month. Specifically over the April break, on top of the routine maintenance that the crew performed. Um, we were able to knock off a bunch of projects and annual maintenance within our facilities. Uh, to include the catch basins were cleaned at the Hill School, Three Rivers in PA. The gymnasium bleachers here at PA and Three Rivers received their annual inspection. The woodchip boiler, uh, at Pembroke Academy received its annual cleaning. Uh, we had exterior doors removed and installed at Three Rivers and Pembroke Academy. All-in, we had seven sets at Three Rivers, and we had six sets at Pembroke Academy, these doors were aging and failing, um, considerably. Um, so we had thirteen sets completed, and specifically these doors were funded by our, our newest round of security grants, um, to a tune of somewhere just south of a hundred thousand dollars. Um, the Honeywell Jace was upgraded at Three Rivers, the Honeywell Jace is the, for lack of better words, the computer that hangs on the wall that allows each building to talk to each other, it more so gains us access to be able to monitor and control what we need to on our end at Three Rivers. Uh, Pembroke Academies was updated last year, and with that Pembroke Hill Schools will be updated over the summer. Um, so that was, that was a big upgrade within our central, our direct digital computer for our heating system. The driveways, uh, and parking lots at the Hill, Three Rivers in PA were swept. The limestone neutralization tanks, um, which are the science filtration systems, were cleaned at Three Rivers and Pembroke Academy, and what those are is anything that goes down the science room sinks in either location go through this filter before it heads out and goes into our discharge water. Um, so those were cleaned. You never know what those science teachers and students are putting down the drain, so that is an important one. Uh, we received a replacement auger that was installed in the woodchip plan as well. Um, the woodchip plan is around eleven, twelve years old, and we are starting to see, uh, small failures such as augers, et cetera. Um, so we had the auger replaced that feeds the woodchips directly into the firebox. Um, another big one is we did finally start, I, all right, excuse me, I can't talk, our gas boiler install here at Pembroke Academy. Um, so if you drove by last Thursday, you would have seen a crane on site lifting, um, and removing the old boilers and picking up and placing the new boilers into the boiler room here. Um, that project is, has not been completed, but that was a big step to get us heading in the right direction. Um, due to this, that, and everything, those, that project has been delayed, so it's, it's good to see that one coming. Um, and that project was, is funded by the S R three grant, so that's in tune of plus nine hundred thousand dollars. Um, so I'm happy to report on that and the doors, we had about, about a million dollars quote unquote of free money within this district last week. Um, we also played host to the Capital Quilters Guild Annual Show at Pembroke Academy, just to give you an idea that we do have conferences and events here on off-hours, um, and if you haven't been to one of those, I highly recommend it. And lastly, and to me most importantly, we had eleven different staff members take some sort of time off, the crew has worked very hard, specifically every day, but this year and last year, and throughout this whole process, I can't say enough good about them. Um, and to say that eleven of them got some sort of time off to get us into this final stretch is very important, so that's our facilities update.
Thank you very much, any questions?
I'll, uh, just bring something we were talking about, uh, last time around, about safety, school safety. Um, the entrances, um, you know, I know here, at the other schools, we have like, you know, that, that, that secure area where you come into. But I did notice just now, and I've been meaning to look forever, is that the glass in those doors is tempered glass. The tempered glass, I mean, I could get through it in ten seconds with a, with a, a spring punch. So one of the, you know, and, and as we saw, what was it, Nashville? Um, shot through the door and was right in, and that's the same situation that we have here. Um, so one of the considerations, it's very expensive to replace it with either bolt resistant or laminated glass, but there is a suggestion out there that you could put like a clear film on these doors, um, which essentially makes it laminated at that point in time. Doesn't make it resistant, but it makes it laminated, which means it stays in place, makes it much more difficult for someone to come through. Uh, the other option is at the bottoms of the doors, you can replace those insulated glass panels or just the regular, uh, single pane windows with a panel. Again, you can't get through it. And that's, you know, the, that's something I think if you could maybe put that on a list, investigate.
So a couple of things, the new doors, we definitely don't put the second window down.
Yeah.
Um, below, so you'll see them throughout all the buildings at Hill School, we were very fortunate, a couple of years back, we were able to do them all there. Number two, all the new windows we're putting in are, they're tempered, but there should be laminate involved as well, so I will investigate out there. Um, and then we have talked about the bulletproof stuff or the, the, the film per se, so that, that is on the list, we just haven't gotten to that point. More so, it's, it's on the discussion list, it's been talked about. Thank you.
Awesome, other question, Josh? All right, thank you very much, appreciate it, pass our thanks on to your team. And that brings us to our principals reports.
Sure.
I'll talk about it whenever you want.
Yeah, we could, yeah, yeah, might as well. In case Josh has something more fun to do tonight, we can get him out of here.
Uh, so a couple of things, I'm gonna talk about some phones, intercoms, and camera switches. All of these were items on the CIP report that we've talked about. Um, specifically the phones and the intercoms have been added over the last year or so, because we've seen some, um, we've seen our systems at, specifically at the Hill School start failing us. Um, we're maxed out at the Hill School, and quite honestly, we robbed parts from the Village School this past year, just to, to date where we are with our phone system. And thank God we saved that village system. Um, so these are items on the CIP report. They were on warrant articles at one point in time, because you, the board, are agents to expend, they were pulled off the warrant articles, because we had talked about them prior, and we were going to be back here talking about them at some point in time. Um, hopefully for you to give the okay. With that, we're looking at new V O I P phone systems for Pembroke Hill School and Three Rivers. We already have done, completed that at, uh, the Pembroke Academy. Some of the items this does for us is it allows us to be E nine one one compliant. It allows us to be Caris Law compliant, and it allows us to be Ray Bond Law compliant. E nine one one compliance allows anybody in these buildings to pretty much dial nine one one, and for nine one one to know that that call came from the library at Pembroke Academy, as an example. Uh, the Ray Bond Law backs that up by saying that the dispatchers need to know where that nine one one call is coming from, to be E nine one compliant, and the Caris Law backs that up by saying we need to be able to just press nine one one for whoever to call it nine one one, so old systems, um, don't always allow you to just dial nine one one. We fixed that at the Three Rivers and the Hill School a couple of years back, but we're not E nine one one compliant at those two buildings, we are at Pembroke Academy because of the, because we already have the V O I P installed. Um, and again, what that does is allows us, or whoever, to be able to call nine one one, and them to know exactly where it is, not that it's just coming from Pembroke Academy, and that they're gonna have to guess. So there's a significant safety upgrade that comes with that, um, for obvious reasons I just explained. With the phone systems, they would receive updated, upgraded front-end systems and back-end systems, so new phones, uh, wiring in most cases, some of the wiring is reusable, um, and then back-end systems back into the server rooms to get us into twenty twenty-three and beyond. Um, I talked about safety, the phone systems would allow the office staff and the administration to zone out, to, if there was an emergency, they'd be able to pick certain areas of the building, say Zone One, and notify that Zone Two is in a situation in, per se, get everybody in a lockdown, or get everybody out of these buildings, without notifying that zone that's in trouble, that we're aware this is happening. Um, it's much easier functioning, um, for the office staff, as I said, as well as the administration, take COVID, for example, uh, the nurses, the admins, the principals, they all went home, they had to make calls, they had to work all night. They, many use their own house phone, many use their own cell phones. In this case, with this upgrade, we'd be able to tie their cellphone in, they'd be able to work from home, um, because we know Dr. Morris loves to work all night, and that phone call would come from Pembroke Academy, it wouldn't come from Dr. Morris's, uh, cellphone. This would build consistency within the district. Um, again, we have consistency of older phones at the other two buildings, but this would be, build the consistency on our end, the maintenance end, the IT infrastructure end, and definitely the service end, um, which at this point in time, our service end is not failing us, but we know we're gonna struggle getting parts, et cetera, for our old phone systems, um, when those do fail. This will also allow us to add on in the future, so say, best case situation, we get a renovation and in addition at the Hill School someday, we'll be able to keep this phone system in and add on to that, that won't be an added cost at that time. Um, I think I did say the Hill School is maxed out, we can't add, if they needed to add a phone into, to whatever room, we don't have one in, which we're pretty covered, but you never know, we couldn't add. Again, we're using old parts from the village system at the Hill School, um, that kind of preempted this conversation. Um, so that's, that's the V O I P part of this, integrated in that, to that, we would look to integrate the intercoms, which are aging at both locations, or at all three locations, so the intercom would be added and upgraded at Pembroke Academy, which wasn't done when the phone system was done, was completed. And it would be added and upgraded at Pembroke Hill School and Three Rivers. Um, two-way speakers would be updated, uh, in all locations, so that's the ability to be able to speak into the library, and then the library, the ability to speak back into that microphone, we'd be able to add on in the future. Again, it would simplify the maintenance by keeping that standardized throughout the district. They would be able to integrate this into the new phone systems. They would also, again, be able to add more zones and be able to control should an emergency arise. And again, it would be easier on the front end of the admin, um, to be able to schedule, et cetera, so with the intercom would come bells at all locations, and, um, they can speak more to it, but they're constantly changing their bells. The current system is out of date, you never know if, um, the new schedule took or not, and they're only able to have four, five, six schedules in there, they'd be able to add more, easier access, would be able to do it, um, on the drop of a dime. Uh, as well as with these intercoms, these, the systems are old, they're out of date, and we definitely can't get parts, and we definitely don't have a good relationship with the service. Um, we haven't had to use them many a times in my day, but that time's coming, we know it's coming. Um, the CPU panels with, within them are failing, we've been lucky, we've had some on hand, that's not gonna be the case moving forward. Again, both of these are significant safety upgrades to the buildings, allow easier access and easier control, should the situation arise. Lastly, there is a monthly charge specifically with the E nine one one compliance, um, and then the phone lines within it. At Pembroke Hill School and Three Rivers School, there's already a, a built-in budgetary number with the phone systems. Within that, there is certain lines that on this end of E nine one, one, we would save on the back end of getting rid of old, we would add the E nine one that we would have to pay monthly, and it would just wash each other out, there wouldn't be an upgrade or an additional charge with that. At Pembroke Academy, as an example, we're paying X amount right now, say five hundred dollars for E nine one one every single month. Um, that would be cut almost fifty percent, so there would be a little bit of a savings there monthly, that's already in that operating budget. Um, again, the biggest need for this is the E nine one one compliance, we're out of date on that, it's time to get into the future, and then all those other items I added. With that, we did price this job out, uh, we were able to get three quotes. Uh, with that, we got a price from TNT for a hundred and thirty-nine thousand, five hundred and one dollars and fifty-six cents. A price from Twin State Technologies for three hundred and ninety-seven thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars and thirty-three cents. And a price from T S E Digital Voice for ninety-three thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars. My recommendation would be from T S E, um, they've been very thorough throughout the process. Um, they were easy and knowledgeable to work with, they are the ones installing the new school at, in Allentown, so there is an established relationship that our S A U I T director has. Um, and on top of that, because of where we fall and because it's, it's a big job, we would ask for a ten percent contingency to be tacked on top of that for a total of a hundred and two thousand, six hundred and fifty-six dollars, and that would be my recommendation for phones and intercoms. I can talk CIP money if you'd like to hear that too quickly.
Those, I was actually gonna ask if that stuff that you just talked about was on CIP?
Yeah, so that's on the CIP. Um, that is in our Equipment Capital Reserve Fund, we started this year with a hundred and sixty-nine thousand, roughly, give or take. Um, we're asking to withdraw a hundred and twenty-four, um, but not really, because my number We're asking to withdraw $124, but not really because my numbers are kind of misstrued. It'd really be about $134. Because I haven't talked about a district mower that's in that line yet that I will be, I'll talk about at a later date. And that would leave us roughly $80,000, $90,000 left over in that account. So it would be a significant use of that line that has been talked about quote unquote not being used enough.
Yeah, so I just looked up the balance and the last number I see is 204-484. That might not be.
Did we do a warrant article for that one? That might not be until after July 1st.
So that makes sense because we're asking to transfer $25,000 to it this year. So that would just get in the ballpark, not exact numbers.
Right, right, okay. Do you want to hit the camera system stuff too while you're at it?
So every year I ask for a little bit of camera maintenance and server. Items in and maintenance. Most years of my time, we've come and asked for more cameras. We've had a significant amount of cameras for the safety of these buildings throughout that time. In that time, selfishly, all I've done is rob IT's camera switches. So we just, we see an open port, we just plug it right in and all of a sudden we own it. They've been very helpful with that transition and allowing us to do that. But the reality of it is, is we've robbed a lot from them throughout time. It's time to get our cameras on their own switches, which is going to alleviate some of the maintenance issues that might come with it. And kind of get everything at a central location at each building. So with that, the camera switches, I would ask to use the annual allotment that we usually spend. Again, this has been done on a warrant article before. We've taken the warrant article out. We now come to you as agents to expend. So with that, it would be a camera switch at Pembroke Hill and Three Rivers, each for $2,740.64. And camera switches at Pembroke Academy totaling $4,272.31. This would ease the IT infrastructure on the back end to allow them easier access to keep going north as they're doing in these buildings and keeping everybody operable.
Questions?
So as far as the phone system goes. You know, I, when you were going through, obviously, whatever, Twin, whoever, 397, it just did not want to do the job. No, they probably, they're just going to give what they determine a very valuable experience. They were very good throughout the process. They communicated very well, they answered our needs very well, we've met with them on numerous occasions. And I think they're going to give a valuable experience as the other two at the tune of a little bit more.
Yeah, a little bit. So, you know, and then I go back to the other two. You know, you've got, you know, a $40,000 difference there, you know, are we comparing apples to oranges?
We're comparing apples to apples. There were some add-ons that we didn't necessarily talk about, but those are as apples to apples as we can get it with different, different companies.
And you're recommending to go with TSE?
TSE. Specifically, they were very good throughout the process. And currently, they're working with Allenstown. We know that process is going very smoothly on the I, on the phone IT system. They have an established relationship with Josh Perubi, our IT Director, who worked very hard on these numbers with myself. I did miss that part and have to say that out loud. So we're very, very confident that we will be in capable hands should we go with TSE. Not only go with them on the project end, but we feel we're going to be very, we're very confident on the back end of once the project's in and who do we call should there, shouldn't issue arise.
Other questions? What's the timeframe, is this something that you're going to do over the summer?
Summer. But I say that very loosely because everything is very drawn out in projects these days, but the plan is the summer.
TSE was 93 for each one.
Yep, and I would ask for a 10% contingency for.
So.
Go ahead.
I don't want to interrupt if there are more questions.
I was just going to comment that I'm a big fan of, you know, choosing the low bid when we can. And the value of having an established relationship already, I think, is is very high, so I like the idea. Also, I mean, just as far as safety and modernization, this all seems like need stuff, not want stuff from my point of view, so.
And for those reasons, I was going to make a motion to approve the request to go with the TSE Digital Voice quote with the 10% contingency as requested. I figured we could take these one by one.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any other questions around just the phone pieces? Okay, then there's.
What'd you say was in there, 204 right now?
That's the sheet from the budget packet in the spring. I think it, I think it was 168, so I think that that might be after July 1. Okay, we use some surplus, assuming there is surplus, but.
So tonight, you're actually, just to make sure that new board members are aware, you're actually approving to proceed with the project and approve the company. And then after the work is done, we would need to have a public hearing and come back and have you take another motion to withdraw the funds from the actual trust fund, just so that everyone's aware of that.
Okay, and we do have an appropriate motion to continue and select the vendor and we've got a second. Are there any other questions? Comments, concerns?
Yeah, so. It's a Hill School, you know, we're, you know, this whole, the whole building plan. How is this going to be affected by that? Is this, are we maybe jumping the gun?
No, so, so we, we made it very clear throughout this process that anything done at the Hill School needs to be able to stay in place should, should something happen within a reasonable time and be added on to. So they're, they're well aware of that.
Anything else? Okay, then all in favor of approving the project to move forward and selecting TSE Digital Voice and including I guess, yeah, the contingency for a total of $122,656 from the equipment trust in the future?
102.
What did I say?
122.
I'm sorry, 10102, 656. And as Patty pointed out, there'll be a public hearing afterwards to actually withdraw the money. So to approve the vendor and moving forward, please say aye.
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 Any opposed, any abstentions? Okay.
Thank you.
There's roughly $10,000 for camera switches as well. Is this the same? This is all the same, right? I did notice, Josh, on this one, you didn't mention the contingency and these are very specific prices, are these like firm quotes then?
Yeah, so this was a quote that was given to us for a budget season and that quote was confirmed today.
Okay.
I wasn't sure on this one, is it TSE that is providing these numbers? I just might not be, my brain might not be comprehending this correctly, but to approve this in the way that you're saying, you know, to approve the vendor, right?
We have a in place, we have a camera vendor in place already, right? So we'll just be continuing.
Okay, so what is the proper format for this motion? Okay. Okay. So then I'd like to move to approve the purchase as recommended at PHS 274064, TRS 274064, NPA 4272 and 31 cents.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
And any discussion on that one? Okay, then all in favor of the expenditures to purchase this camera switches at the three schools, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, any abstentions? Thank you very much, Josh.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Whew. All right, now we're under principal reports. I know you were all waiting with bated breath. We'll start with Wendy tonight.
Hello. This time of year, I know we've mentioned before, we're kind of chock full of events. This week is staff appreciation, I just want to thank PALS, they've done an amazing job, it's a superhero theme this year. And they have something planned each day for staff, I think yesterday was flowers delivered to everybody. Today was breakfast and coffee, and so there's something each day. It's really great to have that, oh, Smoothie Bus, huge hit, by the way, that's a favorite. Next week, we have a lot going on, we have our Scholastic Book Fair, we also have our Spring Night, two night, two different nights for K2 and R34. And our Super SaaS Assembly, we're working on, like we talked about before, kind of like pumping the kids up and just giving them some positive experiences around SaaS. Fourth grade has Bear Brook coming in, they come in every Thursday for three weeks, I believe it is. And they focus on ecology, biomes, New Hampshire animals, and then they end with kind of like a field day type activity for them, it's something they really enjoy. May 18th, we have our Kinder Information Night, so that'll be exciting. The phones are really starting to ring a lot more now, this is about the time where all that new parent jitters start and we have to feel a lot of calls. May 15th for us is kind of where we begin our end of year assessments. Part of it is SaaS, but really, we've spent a lot of time trying to dig into, you know, where our kids are at and being intentional and figuring out what we can do as a staff to target needs for students. So this will be kind of, we've run it all for a year and so we'll have a beginning to end comparison to see student growth. And then specifically how we can tailor our instruction next year, I'm super excited, we have a great team that's working across the building to help kind of dive into all that and make school-wide decisions. Our last faculty meeting, we brought back Regulated Classroom, which was something we started our school year with. It's tailored specifically to teachers because obviously you know, being a teacher, it's, there's a lot that goes on and we really want people to spend some time focusing on themselves as well and how that impacts us and then into the classroom and the kids. So we brought in Emily Daniels, she took us through a protocol to kind of have some conversations around changes from the past three years, it's been really, you know, with, I mean, if you think about it, it was, there was a merge, I was new, COVID. So there's been a lot of change at the Hill School and so she's kind of helping us navigate that. She'll be back again next week, or not next week, the next faculty meeting to do another kind of protocol with it, received quite a bit of positive feedback from it. So we're excited to keep that going. It's more focused on teachers though, which I think is something that we often don't spend enough time on and they're the ones that are the front lines to help support the kids, so we want to make sure that we focus on that. And then I think that's about it for us.
Awesome, questions about Hill School?
I think I'm on now. I had a question, one of our homework assignments, which I completely was not working on at the last minute for this board meeting was to put together our goals for the board looking forward over the next year. And I was, I came across an email that I had written like a year ago saying that our our goals as drafted use, use the word teachers. And I thought that that was too narrow of a word because I noticed the sign for the custodian out on the flashing, you know, PA sign for like months and months and months and months. And you can only run a school without enough custodians for so long, like it takes all of the different types of people at the school. So that just makes me wonder, the Regulated Classroom, I think, is really fantastic, but does it also bring in the paras? Or is it really just the certified staff?
At the beginning of the year, it was all of us, so we spent about three hours with her. Unfortunately, our paras don't attend faculty meetings, it's not part of their contract, so it's not, we don't have an additional time with them. Which is something that we've budgeted, it's part of what's in the budget for next year is to have them be a part of a training one hour a month, like kind of like a faculty meeting because we're realizing, I mean, they, and I'm glad you brought it up because we've renamed things in our building from like Teachers Lounge to Staff Lounge, like because for us, that is intentional. And I catch myself saying, you know, teachers. But so it, it right now is just encompassing the teachers just because of the schedule, it's not something we can, yeah.
Other questions?
Was the locking of the doors? And I was just wondering if you could kind of give a little bit of background and reasoning and, because I think it's concerning to a lot of parents that the doors are locked and the kids are in the hallway and if something happens, they got to go beat on a door to get back in. So just wondering if you could speak to that a little bit?
So I, I had heard that it was brought up and so I reached back out, so we have Jenny Jones, who's our emergency coordinator and done tons of training. And she sent me the resources that I can also send to you guys to kind of take a look at it. So New Hampshire DOE Homeland Security and School Readiness all recommend that doors are locked at all times. I think when you think in terms of, unfortunately, if there's something that happens, the first thing you say is lock a door. Right, and shut the door, the kids are outside, they're, they're in train that they need to go find the next available door. So that's the recommendation coming down from us or to us. And just when we spent time going through the building, obviously, we've had some things in the news that are very unsettling. And when we were reviewing our safety procedures, that's the number one thing that we can do. One of the quickest changes we can make to ensure safety, because like Jean was saying, you know, our doors, when you reflect on it, as a, as an administrator, you watch those videos and you go through your head and you start thinking about those things when you look at your building. And so we just had this moment of looking at safety in our building and that was something that we were not doing. So it was very open. I think it definitely is a culture shift and a culture change. But if you are in the moment where you have a lockdown, the first thing you immediately do is go and lock a door. And then the students are required to find that next available space, they're not required to go to their classroom, if that makes sense, in that moment, because they don't, you know, know where that is. So those are the recommendations coming down from the top three areas and if you're interested, we can forward that information to you.
Others? All right, thank you very much. We'll move on to TRS. Sorry, I picked two people that didn't have mics first.
Oh, can you see it in my face? Well, we survived two trips, you know, that's like the, you know, if you can imagine sending 78th graders to DC with about four, four or five adults, you can imagine, actually probably six adults. But as always, the trip was great, you know, kids always reflect on how much they liked the bus ride. To me, 10 hours one way is not the most fun part of the trip, but they, they, I don't know if any of you, you've probably had some of your kids go on it, it is like, I mean, it's like, get off the bus and they are trucking the whole day. They spend a ton of time going through DC and they come home and my guess is they're not real pleasant to be around for a couple of days until they catch up on their sleep. The environmental camp has always went great, they have such a great program, they have sixth grade and they have a couple hour session in the morning, a couple hour session in the afternoon, then a couple hour session in the evening. It's a lot of hands-on, they're really working with the environment. They have, when they eat dinner, it's kind of family style, you know, cell phones aren't part of the equation and it's really, it's really refreshing, I didn't go, it was really refreshing to hear those kids come back and have relatively good time. We used to have it in one area where it was tense and stuff, now they've got, they've got actually bathrooms and stuff. It's kind of nice, little nice upgrade for the kids. But both those went very well, as expected. Also want to, Wendy brought up PALS, they're just so supportive. And I can't say enough about the support that teachers feel from them. Teachers don't need a lot usually, but you know, we didn't like, we had, we didn't have breakfast this morning, we flip-flopped back and forth from there, we had tacos today. And for staff to be able to just go down and get something light and not have to worry about making a lunch for one day, it's a pretty big deal for folks, so they do, they do a great job. As PALS has always done a really good job. Our musical came off as always, did a great job, we had a really good turnout. Kids, kids amaze me when, when you see kids throughout the day, you know, some of them are quiet, some of them are not quiet. But then they get on stage and you're like, holy moly, where did that come from? You know, this kid that may not be, you know. where did that come from? You know, this kid that may not be, you know, doing other things, they just shine, and it's really, really exciting to see. And our staff just does an awesome job with, with all that. I know I've brought it up before, but I, you know, I have to bring up SASS again. I've talked about preparing for it. Well, now we're in it. So, it's a little unique to Three Rivers, because we have to test every single kid in the building, and we have to do it basically at the same time. We've tried it other ways, but it just is really, really challenging. So, we spend a lot of time getting prepared for that, just mechanically getting prepared for, for schedules and stuff. So, you'll see, kids will have a little bit different schedule during the day, so we can pull that off. We also have our sixth-grade science teacher has got a mini-house coming. I have yet to see this, but it's going to be in our parking lot, and he does an energy unit. So they're going to bring in an actual house that kids are going to be able to go through and kind of look at the energy. He does a lot of cool things with energy. So, it was supposed to happen yesterday, but the rain kind of prevented that, so we think it's going to happen tomorrow. So, I'll stay tuned. But, so that's, that's exciting for sixth grade. And I think that's about it.
All right. Questions for John?
Well, in that case, I'll share a personal anecdote. My daughter, they got home from DC at whatever it was, nine o'clock, happened to have a bagpipe competition the next day. Where not only did she have to compete with her band at two o'clock in the afternoon, but she was competing solo also, so she had to be in Salem at 8:00 AM.
That went well.
She actually, she placed in two events. She got an award for the most promising piper of the day, but between her solo stuff and the band stuff, she literally fell asleep sitting up. She was white as a sheet, and she was asleep for about two and a half minutes before the pipe sergeant started, like, yelling, "All right, everybody, line up the instruments." So, yeah, it was a long day. But she really, really enjoyed the trip.
All right. We'll move on to Mr. Morris.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Today was yard sign distribution day, so you'll start to see, I bet you have one in your front. So, it's a, it's a two-step process. They get a sign, and I tell them that we are giving them that because we're proud of them, but they're also getting an ice cream, and that's transactional, because that means that they have to promise that they will not fail senior English, which is a graduation requirement. So, it will be nice to see those in the community. We have our spring production for our drama club. That is called The Play That Goes Wrong, and that will be up on Friday night, Saturday night, and then a matinee on Sunday. Looking forward to that. And we had, and Jake was actually one of them, we had students that went on the Costa Rica trip over April break. They had a great time. There was a bus that was stuck at one point, but everyone survived, and they came back and significantly tanner than their peers, and they had a great experience. We had a very busy April. As you know, we had our NIASK visit the first week of April, followed by our EDDY's visit the second week of April, and those two experiences went very well. Consistent feedback from both of those groups was the condition of our facilities and the work that Josh and his team do, and they do a tremendous job. And, in fact, one of the NIASK representatives said that for a school that has so many different additions spanning so many different decades, you would, aesthetically, you could tell, but there is no part of the building that's in disrepair, given, you know, that it's, you know, from the 50s. So, I thought that was, that was a nice compliment for Josh and his team. And then, the other comment that was consistent between those two groups was our inclusive and safe and healthy sense of community among our staff and our students. And really pleased with that, and really pleased with the amount of participation we got from our, our students, particularly. We also had parents that came in and met for some of these kind of breakout sessions, and it was really helpful. And then lastly, I guess, connected to that, I just want to recognize the passing of Peter Warburton. You know, he was a mentor of mine, and our staff was really supportive of the SAU. And as much as I, you know, feel strongly about Peter, I had nothing to do with that, and they were really just empathetic with the SAU staff and supported them through a tough couple of weeks. I yield the remainder of my time.
Any questions for Dr. Morris?
Yeah, I can go get that. One copy? Yeah, okay.
Have questions for him first? Anybody? Okay. Thank you. All right. Well, we wait for that. That brings us to SAU Board slash Exec Board. There was a full board meeting that I missed. You're listed as the one to share here. It's 12th, I think. It's 12th. Was that the board re-earthing? Was that?
That's the board re-earthing.
And there's another one, and an AREA next week on the 10th? Right here in the? Questions about that? All right. Yep. Yeah, there are a couple who are anxious. All right. Melanie, anything on Hill School Reno?
Because I'm trying to remember. I haven't, yeah, because... Yeah, so we met April 18th, so I don't think I've shared this with you guys. Okay.
Yeah, it was the same day.
Yeah, but we had a working meeting, didn't we? I don't remember.
Yeah, we didn't do, we didn't do reports. You're right.
Okay. Because I had this in my visor saying, "Read next time."
Yeah.
So, just asking. Okay. So, we did have a meeting April 18th. Mostly, they're in the conceptual design phase right now for spring. We went over a little bit of timeline. January 24 is when our applications due. March 24 will be the bond vote. He's done a lot of, the architecture's done a lot of work with the surveys, with the school staff, and have, like, small group meetings, one-to-one meetings, gathered a ton of information, and we looked at all the slides, and they kind of broke it down, like, positives and negatives and what they wish they had. So just a few things, like, there is a lot of positives in that building. A lot of people enjoy the sunlight and the big windows, the natural light. You can move furniture around in some of the spaces, but obviously, a lot of the negative things is, the big one that was on every single one was the cafeteria is driving that whole entire school. That, there's too many kids for, that be your gym and your lunch and everything. And also, the, really wanting some flexible rooms, like, rooms that can be used for sensory processing, quiet areas, or for teachers and classrooms to get together. So they went through all of that. A lot of, I found it interesting just to see, like, through all the different disciplines, that there was so many things the same, positive, negative, and they all really want the same things. The next steps are pretty much just community involvement. So we talked about that. They're going to send out questionnaire, right, a survey questionnaire to the community. They're going to be working on that. I thought they were working on, like, three or four questions of, yeah, a community survey, and then trying to get some community engagement, whether online and in person, because pretty much what we're at the, we need to get, like, the community backing. We need to have, like, a strong community backing of a few people that gets, gets bigger and bigger to help support our project as we get closer to that deadline, was the biggest takeaway. And it can't be us. So the next meeting is, I think I wrote it down, our next, uh, May 16th. May 16th at 4:00 is the next one. That's it, unless I miss something. Feel free.
Any questions?
They didn't. They said that they were going to try to do, like, three or four brief questions, and that they would be working on it from that last meeting, so I'm assuming they'll have something for us to look at at the next meeting, is what I took, and, yeah.
We talked about the difficulty always that we have getting community input, and, you know, where do we go for that? And I threw out the suggestion in Deerfield. We had little postcards with QR codes, and, like, old home days, you know, somebody be there and have the QR code. And any big event that anyone can think of in the town, or any place, central location that people go, we can get those out for people.
And with the QR, I mean, you put the QR code right on the website, too, and we could even, yeah, we could ask pretty please if the town put it up for a little while on their website. Any que, any other questions for Melanie?
Is there any design plan?
Not yet.
Is, and I can go into this when I do the NBC report, too, because there was some concern, you know, they mentioned the January deadline for a bond hearing, which seems, you know, you mentioned January 24th, is that, that's?
That's the application deadline for a buil, yeah.
For building, but we have to have a public hearing, apparently, in January. Public bond hearing in January, is what I was informed. So, you know, if, so we obviously have to have a bond hearing and everything all ready to go, obviously, earlier than the 24th.
Yeah. It sounded like that was the next step, right, Patty, from what, yeah, that's the next step, is what we're going to see.
They, once they gather all of this feedback, then they start to go out and do conceptuals and come back with some design ideas, and we can start narrowing it down from there.
I can't wait to see pictures.
No, that's the fun part. They're really great about making any changes, too. I mean, they, last year, they would come to meetings and actually move things around and take feedback, and they, it's amazing what they can do with the feedback that they get, and really alter it to your wishes. So, it's fun when you get to that stage.
Any other questions about the Hill School renovation? All right, then moving on to NBC. Last one of these for a little while.
Yep. So, we had our retrospective last week, and went well. Everybody's really happy with the process this year. Probably the best, everyone that has been part of the, the Budget Committee in the past came up with the same. It was, it was a very good process this year. Some of the things that they did mention for the schools, they liked the breakdown of the contract in this, in spreadsheet form, and they'd like to continue that each year. The contract spreadsheet for the, for the teachers.
I think I know what they mean, like, to...
CBA, yes, I'm sorry, yes, yeah.
Yep. And one of the other things they had mentioned was a, if they could have a list of unanticipated revenue carried on year after year, so they could basically track it.
So maybe it becomes not unanticipated eventually.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. Like, you know, it was, it was specific to the unanticipated revenue, you know, so 2020, 2021, you know, so they'd like to have a historical view. Yes, yes. And also, going back to the Building Committee, the NBC would like to get a tour of the Hill School sometime in the fall while classes are in session to see what it really is like.
There's the closet.
Can I, yeah.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, I, if I can just step in for a second. They mentioned that earlier when we were talking about this, too, and I think that's super important. Like Jean said, this was, this was the best season that I've had with them. The relationship is way stronger than it was four or five years ago, and generally, they are, even the folks on the NBC that are not, how do I say, super happy about spending money, are open-minded, and if they can see those conditions, they're, they're going to see that it's a good idea to do this. So I think it's super important that we make that happen.
That's that. Also, a comment was made. They'd like to know where the dollars are coming from for all the outstanding audits, and were all the lines fully expended previously, in previous years? I would, you know, if, I think that would be something probably for the fall.
Or maybe the next time there's a significant update on the...
Yeah, yeah, something like that. They don't need it, obviously, right now. Nobody's meeting, and nobody's going to get that information until, till the fall. And one of the other comments, you know, the tax bills went out late this year, and they were emphasizing the importance of getting the MS forms in. I think they're due September 1st, and October 1st is kind of like, you know, the unofficial deadline that makes, keeps things easy, but not, you know, we, they don't get behind. And Dave Jowlin had mentioned that he submits his MS forms, sometimes incomplete, gets them out in August, and apparently, his are easily updatable through the portal. So that's just, start them or whatever, because they're, they're started, oh, maybe that was the case. They're started online through a portal, right? And, you know, so he's, he starts his early and then just updates as they go along, just so we can avoid... I'm sorry? I understand that. Yeah, yeah. Yeah, but their big concern was basically having the tax bills go out late, so. So, and then I mentioned the, the deadline for the bond hearings was in, was in January, so. And that's pretty much it. It was a good meeting. Oh, one other thing of note. AG and the town came to an agreement remediation, and basically, we were losing 14 million in assessed value. So, which equated out to, like, 37 cents per thousand on the tax rate. And they kind of waved off, they were, they were going back to, I think, 2019, they wanted it, and they waved off 2019, and I think, I didn't write the part down, but 20 and 21, they kind of worked out. But this is all-inclusive. That's going to be the, you know, the 14 million total loss in appraised value is the bottom line on it right now.
I had a question on that part. I know we're due for a town-wide reassessment. Do you know if there was any provision in the settlement regarding that?
I do not.
Okay. My assumption would be that they're fair game for reassessment.
They are, but there's not, there's not enough business property for sale to real, to really make a, a good comparison. So, you know, like, like happened back in 2017, 2018, I think a lot of it's going to fall to the residents.
Yeah. That, that was part of the 2017 shortfall, was that a townwide revaluation happened, and AG was low. So, when you look at the grand scheme of things, the piece of the pie the residents paid got bigger, and the piece of pie the businesses paid got smaller, and that hit us. And that was the, I'll say, excuse that they used at the time, is they couldn't find comps, because that business is so big, and there's no other big businesses in that which I find to be a bit of a cop-out, but that's just my personal opinion.
Anything else?
That's all.
Any questions for Jean on NBC?
To ask the question whether it might be sensible to either actually schedule or brainstorm getting that tour conceptually scheduled, because I know we're sort of like round... I know we're sort of like rounding the corner to the end of the school year, which is a crazy time. And then many people associated with school. You know, disassociate from school over the summer. And then the beginning of school is, you know. Who, it's a good argument, what's crazier, the end of school or the beginning of school? So it might just make sense to maybe like get that tour scheduled sooner rather than later, even conceptually, like if we could decide like, okay, it should be the first half of October or.
And I think that'll, that'll come through, um, because we meet again, starting in late September. So I think one of the first meetings will be to do that. That's on the agenda already pretty much. So I think they'll be reaching out to you to try to schedule. That up and everything like that.
I'm just, I'm, I'm a little bit worried that if, um, it's a pretty big group of people, the committee, and there's a lot of, I'm making an assumption that there are a lot of times that would be. Less ideal rather than more ideal. And so if like windows of time could be noted, like this would be a good time. And they know that sooner rather than later, that just might be a little bit more organized than figuring out in September that like. The stars are not going to align until, you know, right before these really important meetings.
I think, no, I think this is pretty high on their, their agenda because this is going to be a, a really big thing. So it's, it's probably going to. Take up a lot of the time. So I, I, that's not going to fall through the cracks and it's not going to go late.
I would just ask Wendy, you know, as you're building, as you make the schedule for the fall, just keep that in mind. I don't know when everything falls into place, but just keep in mind that that's on the radar.
Won't be a problem. We'll be able to figure it out and we'll just, when they're ready to schedule it, we'll be good.
I'm thinking the least desirable times, the most chaotic times are the best times.
Okay, we really want to go there? Lunch and recess time when transition's in the building and you see the kids in full swing? I can give you some time.
If you're interested in the budget committee, there is an opening. Um, I can get you the contact information for the, uh, budget committee, um, chair. It does get pretty intense, you know, September is, you know, just like a. Opening kind of meeting and everything. Um, we'll get some information that next year they'll be talking about the trust funds early on. So people get some information into how those work. But it does get pretty intense, you know, from, you know, mid-October all the way to March. So, um, it would be, I mean, if you're interested in volunteering and, and finding out what's going on in town and being able to see the numbers. It's a, it's a great place to be. Um, the other thing too is that CIP starts up, which is Cap- Capital Improvement Project. That starts up. In July and it's about six meetings. It's pretty laid back. You go to the various departments in town. There are resident positions on that, so you don't have to be a part of any other board. You can be just a resident from the town. You can see what goes on in all the department from Town Hall to DPW to the, to the rec, to the safety center and the schools. Um, and that's another way to, you know, include yourself and, and, and find out what's going. I've been. Doing, I think this will be my fifth year doing CIP and for the school board and I, I enjoy doing it. It's in the summertime. Usually pretty quick, hour, hour and a half meetings, um, you know, and you really get good insight also. And that doesn't preclude you from going for the budget committee either. You can be on CIP and, CIP and the budget committee. So those are both good opportunities to find out what's going on and get back, get involved and all that good stuff, so.
Yeah, I would echo that. The budget committee, you really look at kind of, and you hear from every town department too. So, you know, the library director and the library board come in and talk to you about. What the library needs for the next year and write down through with fire and ambulance and everything. And I've never done the CIP. But like Jean said, both of those. I was going to say both of those are good ways to see how the sausage is made, but after all of the talk of that one wood chipper last year, maybe that's, that's not a good. But yeah. Yeah, they're, they're great though.
Yeah, if you're, if you're interested in any of those, I can get you the information. And, uh, my email's right on the website, on the SAU website or the Pembroke Academy or the Pembroke School District website. So.
All right. I think that wraps up board reports. Seven is consent. We still have zero on that. All right. Uh, gifts and donations also none. Um, so that brings us to actual business. Um, so. School board goals. Uh, so we were going to take a look at what we had last year. I just saw that and I misplaced it. Here it is. Um, so I'll, I'll do a quick recap of last year's goals and sort of where we are or where we left them. And then we can talk about if we want to carry those forward. And then if there are other ones that people have come up with, um, we can sort of quickly jot those down and then we can polish this. At our work session this month, uh, and you know, if, if people haven't had the time to come up with new suggestions, we can certainly add them later too. So quickly looking through last year, um, our first goal was to prepare responsible student first budget for the 2324 academic year that provides more than an adequate education. Per New Hampshire State adequate education standards prior to the Pembroke School District delivery session in March 2023. And we completed that, um, and thanks to the town, that budget was passed. Our second goal was the Pembroke School Board will negotiate contract for the certified staff that aims to attract and retain talent in staff. It continues to move the staff toward at least state average pay, um, by February and our negotiations team did a bang up job with that. That was ratified. By the union and also, um, passed the town vote. So that one is done. Our third goal was, um, that we would oversee facilitate advance the process of renovating and expanding Pembroke Hill School by participating monthly planning meetings. And communicating progress to the Pembroke community through social media, the district website, um, and something not technology dependent, there's no. This goal will be reevaluated at the end of each academic year until the project's complete. So that's obviously a carry forward. We've been getting routine updates on that. I personally, I don't think there's anything really to, uh, change about that. I would just say, you know, we want to continue to. Make sure that we keep the town and the budget committee in particular in the loop, um, as much as we can. Our fourth goal, uh, in collaboration with the exec board, the Pembroke School Board will implement a process and conduct an evaluation of the superintendent on a yearly basis. So we did, I don't think we closed the loop on that one. We did come up with a process. We've had a couple of, um, a couple of evaluations in non-public for. Uh, sort of goal progress and things like that. So we can touch on that. We also had a goal number five to create a district communication plan. That one has lagged. I think that we've got some rough framework in place, but that one probably should be carried forward. And then goal six was the culture and climate survey, which did not get done. I know that's near and dear to some of our hearts. So. That's what we did last year. Um, I would say three of the six are, are, yeah, three of the six are done. One, um, is continuing on. So that's kind of where we're at. Um, does everybody agree that Hill School? Superintendent evaluation and communication plan and survey all should be carried forward. And does anybody want to tweak any of the language?
I'll just bring up something and I don't know if Josh has been doing this, the Facebook side of it. I got an email that said my, my, some Facebook page wasn't.
Yeah, it's spam crap. I got them too.
I didn't look at it. I just saw that. I just was like, I'm just going to ask the question.
No, I did a double take too, because it was like the day after Patty said that, that Josh was provisioning an email address or something so that we could do that. I got the same message saying my Facebook account was hacked or something. No, I haven't got, I don't think I've received anything. I can set it up if he wants to, if he wants to send me. Okay. Did I get an email with that email? I, I'll double check, but yeah.
I shouldn't have jumped in like that. I was planning to set it up. I don't, if somebody else wants to take that on, by all means.
It's all yours.
Yep.
Right.
Um, my answer to your question is yes, I agree. All those things should be carried forward. Um, I have some. I guess thoughts about a communication plan, which I did at one meeting, agree to draft and I have not done that, but, um. I do have, um, one, two, three, four, five, six, uh, maybe five things about that. I think we need to retain a consultant to help us develop a communication plans and plan and or improve. Our website, online, social media presence, so it's more effective or even so that it is effective. I think we should produce a modern annual report apart from the town of Pembroke annual report, by which I mean a zippy five to 25 page accurate, but promotional publication. Kind of like a mini magazine, but also mobile friendly. It wouldn't be mostly a print document. I think we should start the Facebook page. Um, I think we need to revamp the Pembroke School District website so it's more user friendly. Especially including making the policies more accessible, more user friendly. And I wonder about having the principals do a written report in advance of the meetings so that those reports are accessible to members of the public who do not attend the meetings. So that they can get those, that information. So I think that that, the information the principals present is some of the most important information that is. Provided at our board meetings. So those are my thoughts on communication.
Yeah, I'm in agreement. These all should be carried forward. Uh, just the wording change for the, uh, contract portion.
Oh, we got to carry that one forward too.
Yeah. So that's got to go to the, um, instead of certified staff, this goes to the, uh, para-professionals.
And the budget, you know, just change the year.
Just saying, and the budget. And, um, I did, I had emailed Nate Oxnard from Deerfield because he was the current chair at the time of the exec board. Have something also to address the SAU website too, because it's like not up to date. And, you know, there's up to date stuff on it, but there's also really old stuff on it too, so.
And another issue with the website is like, even sometimes when there's new stuff there, it's, it's like buried, you know, it's like, you can't, you almost can't find it.
I think it, you know, I know we're working on goals not to get into the weeds too much, but who updates and manages the websites? Okay then.
Individuals.
Yeah. And, and that's, that's been part of our issue and we had, um, the board had approved a small stipend, um, I think before COVID. For, and the tech integrators were going to kind of take that on and, and update and, and put information. There, that's, and part of the issue is it's going to take a good probably, um, funding source. That's a, a pretty big project and we've discussed the policies because they're in SharePoint. And if you forward the link, it doesn't work. You actually have to go to the policy and open it yourself, which isn't helpful when you're trying to share things, especially on like Facebook. So we've talked about those things, but it's a big undertaking and it's going to, you know, it needs to, we need to involve Josh too. So you, if you want to add that in to work with the SAU technology. Director, um, because all the websites are standard through the SAU. Um, so we really, and that's, it's a good place to talk about it at the exec board to say, hey, is everybody in agreement? We really need to do some overhaul and maybe that's something that goes into the SAU budget next year in the fall when we're developing that.
I also think there's potential, again, I noted, I've been plotting through the annual town report, you know? And I see all of these local companies sponsoring the old home days and the, um, the meat, meat and sun cook and the, you know, there's, there's. Oh, who got, um, ah, someone got $20,000 for something. You know, there's, there's a lot of potential for some local private, um, public partnerships for this type of sort of one-off. I think we need to discuss the maintenance, the ongoing maintenance issue, but I also think there's going to be a one-off overhaul expense. And for that part, I, I think that it is possible to not. Put all of it in the budget.
I'll say a possibly unpopular thing just off the cuff. Many, most maybe, um, organizations, companies, whatever, today employ people to do this stuff. And I know that there's a strong resistance in town about adding positions to almost anywhere. Um, but I mean. Off the top of my head to do this correctly, and it's probably an SAU based position because the websites are a shared resource. You know, sometime down the road, we may want to consider a social media manager whose job it is to do these things. Um, so at least there's somebody to. That owns the process. I think right now it's fairly disparate and I think that, you know, Patty's secretary does some of the SAU stuff and. Somebody else does stuff at Hill School and like, but that, at some point, there's a need for a professional service there in my opinion. So just food for thought.
And just to sort of amplify that sentiment, I think that that. Is the kind of thing that would really gel and, and be solidified out of. Good strategic planning work that I think we all endeavor to do in the future. You know, I really, I agree with what you're saying, Andy, but it. I think that touches on a lot of goals and objectives that we want to achieve as a board on behalf of the district.
Yeah. And I think, I think we had spoken briefly about a, um, a survey of some sort too, and I think that. I think that's important because it gets community input, but also if, you know, if we ever tried to go down the road of making this a paid position to manage these things. I think you could get support for that in that it's a direct response to an ask from the community. The community is saying, you know, we would prefer better communication, however that looks. And, you know, you, you can only increase services so much on the backs of the people that you already have. But I think including them in the, the ask of, hey, what do you want out of our communication, um, gives them some ownership and, and might make it more palatable.
I would, um, like to suggest a different thing. There's the, the line item there about the paraprofessional contract. And it talks about attracting and retaining. And I'd like to have a similar statement that covers everybody else that doesn't. Either need a contract this year, like our certified staff or ever have a contract. So just like a general statement about attracting and retaining, you know, personnel.
Yeah, I agree. It's been, it's been floating there on the bottom of the list for a couple of years. Um, understandably, you know, priorities shifted, but, um, I don't know. I don't know if it would be Dr. Morris, um, but if somebody could, I know this was done, was it four years ago, five years ago, the last time that we did one? If we can get some information about what that was or how it was administered or was there a company involved? Like what, or was it something we self-produced or?
What I had mentioned, um, I think last year was Chris Motica had done that work and he had done it for Deerfield. And unfortunately we lost that position, so that's been vacant this year. Um, I'm hoping when, um, Amy takes over on July 1st, I think she'll have access to his drive and that we can start. I, I did want to use that template, that maybe what you're referring to is not recreate, recreate the wheel because he did. Um, a lot of research on other existing culture, climate surveys and pulled questions from a bunch of different places. So I don't want to duplicate that work. Um, but being short, well, two key SAU positions this year definitely slowed things down, so.
Cool. Okay. So that was kind of a lot, little fire hosi.
I have a few more.
Sure, go ahead.
I want to evaluate the status and service to underrepresented communities. Um, starting with getting a handle on what the overall demographic snapshot of the district student population is, you know, looking at things like race, race, ethnic. Ethnicity, low English proficiency populations, economic status, et cetera. Um, I have a fiscal one. Um, there was this one time when we got a report that was similar to like a budget versus actual, and it had the, um, bottom line surplus to date, and I think it was just a very simple report to run, and I would love for us to get that every single month. Awesome. Awesome. Um, and then, I, I just wanted to say I would love for there to be a line item that we are committed to engaging in a strategic plan process. Um, scrolling down.
Can I jump in in just a second, Amy's? Whether it's a, for me, whether it's a formal strategic process, or we hire a facilitator to organize what we've started, I'd like to see that as a goal, too. And just so everybody knows, I did open the lines of communication with those two people. We have a really good firewall, so what was happening is those people never actually got our emails, they were bouncing back, and it took me a while to figure it out. So they both had Gmails, and they were coming back funky encrypted, so they were not, so we couldn't use the SAU 53 email.
Okay.
But that's a good thing.
Yeah.
That's a good thing, but, so in any case, Andy has the contact, and one already responded, yeah.
Just last night, so I haven't reached back out, but.
If I can put my parent hat on for a second, um, which may eventually turn into my board member hat, but right now it's my parent hat. Um, I am looking into whether the, uh, Inflation Reduction Act might be able to fund the purchase of electric school bushe, school buses, um, and the construction of a garage, and further the district in acquiring our own fleet, um, and also further lots of other great objectives along the way. Um, I have a huge passion in making this happen, and, you know, you and I stand at the bus stop every morning, and we see the busing situation, and sometimes it's 45 minutes that we stand there and wait for the bus that sometimes doesn't come. Um, so I'm, I'm all in on getting our bus situation improved. Um, I, I do not think it's something that we can accomplish within the next year, but I don't think it's something that we should let go of.
Um, I agree, and I would go so far as to say, uh, candidly, let's talk about this a little bit more at our next, at our May work session, um, because I went down a rabbit hole on it a year or so ago, too, um, and I know that there are other SAU board members that have interest in this topic. Um, so, next, next meeting, we can just informally, you know, kind of feel each other out and see what the intention is, but, um, there, for Cliff Notes, and I may have mentioned this at a meeting already, there's a company, Amy, I want to say they were out of Rhode Island, um, that sort of provides busing as a service, and basically, you, you have to build a depot, but then they lease electric buses, but they lease the whole, they, I think you hire your own drivers, but then they're responsible for the bus, the maintenance, making sure it gets plugged in every nice way, like a whole, and it's kind of a, it was interesting.
Yeah.
Not any sort of expert in it, um, but it, their, their pitch was, they, they were guaranteeing that they could come in at, under what your annual cost for busing was currently, so.
Yeah, and maintenance on electric buses is like, nothing. Um, there are several school districts in Vermont, which is, you know, similar climate, similar terrain, that are successfully maintaining electric school bus fleets on their own. So, anyway, yeah, we could get into, we could devote some time to this at a later date.
I'm pretty sure UNH, all the buses there have been electric for almost 10 years. But.
I'll go back to the SAU, full SAU board meeting. We did discuss the busing, the, uh, contract, the RFPs went out? Any responses? Okay. All right. Um, and then, anecdotally, I was actually talking to, on the electric side of this, one of the, uh, the owner of Mariano's, and Chrysler's requiring them to put in charging stations, not just for their own vehicles, but for anybody who wants to roll up. So currently, you know, he, he's in the process, Concord has told them that they are at least three years out from being, being able to provide the infrastructure to get him the electricity that he needs, so that's something, it's, and we're here, so it's probably even further down the road, so, something to consider on that.
Mm-hmm.
It's a good idea, but, you know.
Yeah, well, that's, that's why I mentioned, this is not like a one-year, you know, solution.
It was kind of eye-opening, but you just can't run a line, you know?
A bunch of extension ports for you to Deerfield.
Yeah, I, I didn't know what this, but, you know.
If you happen to have a wing of an elementary school that was covered in solar panels, hey now.
Okay, anything else to put on the, the big list here right now? So, can we ask Ashley to look at Sandy's notes and try to put this into some sort of an organized thing for us to look at next time, and weed out and polish, and, I mean, I've taken a lot of notes.
I'll email you my notes.
Yeah. Um, all right, uh, anything else on goals specifically or generally, before we move on? Okay, um, so we added an INB for the Technology Trust.
During budget cuts, we, if you recall, we separated out the spreadsheet, I, or I did, at the bottom with tabs on that cut sheet, and said, okay, these are the things we were gonna use the Technology Trust for, these are the things for the instructional material. Um, we were working with the NBCs to say, let's start using our trust funds a little bit more. So, we had set aside, um, during the budget cuts, $21,000 from, um, Ree Rivers, and $5,800 from Hill, we cut that from the budget, and it was for server and access points, and we designated that toward the Technology Trust. So Josh is just looking to make sure that you're still okay with that, he wants to start moving forward. I think PAs we actually left in the budget, um, but we would do the same thing, as long as you're okay with him moving forward, nothing's changed, um, he'll get that project going, and then when it's done, we'll come back and have a public hearing for, to withdraw the money. Um, I did check, and the balance, um, for the tech trust, and I think I got it from the Budget Binder, was just over $68,000, so. Is that okay, to pers, for him to proceed?
Agree. Yep.
I will let him know, thank you.
Fantastic. Um, all right, so we've got a bunch of policies. There was a couple that, that, um, folks were gonna look into, some specific items on it, but I think for the most part, we're planning to get rid of these, right?
Yeah.
Um.
She's not getting a job.
You have to administer it.
Yeah, and, yeah.
Okay, I'll just run through quickly, um, I don't know that we have to take action tonight, but just to update us, um, we do? We can't?
We can.
It's not all of them. Um, so DIA, the fund balance, um, Amber just got that to me this afternoon, she did work with our auditing, our CPA consultant, um, to make sure that we had everything in there from the GASB rules that would, the NHSBA, um, draft wasn't sufficient, we didn't feel like so, and, um, the boards had asked that we show the auditors, um, that policy to make sure we had everything in there, and we have a draft, but I got it this afternoon, so I'm gonna have to put that in your drive, um, for you to take a look at. Do you wanna pause?
Sure.
Please hold.
Yeah. I know. I had to go back, I didn't sign, or I didn't like write in the position. It's a personal oath. Almost as good as our district website? Yes. Right. I, yeah. Yeah. I did find it useful, though, by the way.
Yeah.
Yeah, not the website, that webinar, yeah. I might even like have PDFs. Oh, yeah. 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 You're like, that's super helpful.
Okay, so you were saying?
Yeah, so I'm saying, so DIA is, um, will be coming soon, it's been revised, we'll get that in the drive. Um, I believe the records retention schedule is good to go with the sample.
It is.
It is. Do you wanna take that one while we're on it, if you guys are ready?
Somebody wanna make a motion?
Approve policy EHB-R, record retention schedule.
For a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Woohoo, look at us.
See, you got one. Um, GCB is, was a recommended policy for, um, our policy was called Support Staff Development Opportunities from 1982. If you want a policy, there is a policy with that coding from NHSBA, it's, but it's called Professional Staff Contracts. Um, I don't know how necessary this is, we, we all do our contracts, um, it's up to you whether you wanna take the, the school board recommended policy, but I would strongly suggest that we not keep our 1980, whatever it was, policy.
In the letter?
1989.
GCB is the new one, or GCB is our old one?
GCB you have, but it's not the same GCB, it has changed since 1989.
Okay.
So the School Board Association version is the one you wanna look at, and decide whether you like the language, and whether you want that policy. If you do, we would replace yours from the 80s.
Okay, so.
Have you had a chance to look at that?
Is that the School Board Association one?
Yeah.
Has that already been with this prior to tonight?
I thought it was in the drive.
Together?
Yeah.
I think it was, 'cause I think I'm all set with it, 'cause we looked at that. Okay. Did you notice, 'cause there's some that don't have the school board?
That's because it doesn't exist, yeah, yeah.
So then, yes, I'm okay with that.
GCB's good?
Yeah.
Wait.
So are we replacing, or are we throwing it away?
The School Board Association version.
Correct, School Board Association version.
Called Professional Staff Contracts.
So is the motion that, for GCB to replace GCB? The, the school board?
It was, the motion would be to, yes, to adopt the sample.
I'll make a motion to approve, to adopt the School Board Association version to replace GCB. Does that make sense?
Can I, can I, I'm sorry, I just have some questions about what this policy even applies to. What is a professional, permanent, what is a permanent professional employee?
Let me, uh, since we have a motion, I'll second it.
Okay.
Carrie already seconded it.
Yeah, Carrie did, yes.
I don't know if she got it.
Yeah, because if this applies to certified staff, and only certified staff, people, if this applies only to people who have a CBA, meaning paraprofessionals and teachers, I don't think we need this, because we negotiate those contracts with our attorneys, very painstakingly.
Yeah.
But I thought we mentioned that, and we were told we had, isn't this one of the ones that you said at the last meeting, we had to have, though?
No.
It's not?
It's not.
Okay.
You can, if you want it, but that's what, that's how I started the conversation, that we have professional contracts, everyone gets them, and they're signed, um, so it's, it's not necessary, it's up to you whether you wanna have it or not.
Right. Yeah, so I, I would be in favor of scrapping the old one, and not adopting this new one.
For conversation's sake, I agree. We do have a motion on the floor to adopt the new one, though, so we have to vote on that.
Right.
Um, so is there any other conversation before we do so? Okay, so the motion is to adopt the School Board Association sample policy to replace the old one. So, um, all in favor of that, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye?
Aye.
Abstentions? Two and three?
Two and three.
No abstentions?
Sorry, I was late.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to rescind the 1989, um, GCB.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion around that?
My only discussion on this is right now Carrie and I can't pull up those policies to make sure, we can't pull up anything on the New Hampshire School Board Association policy to make sure it's not a requirement in there anywhere.
I have it.
Okay.
Yep, it says recommended.
Okay.
And the only thing in the policy, it says, "Contracts are designed to protect the interests of the employee and the district. Every permanent professional employee shall be required to execute a contract with the district. The contract shall be signed by the employee and the chairperson of the board."
Okay.
And that's been delegated to me.
Okay. Then I'm good. It's just so hard right now that we can't cross-reference, so I hate to get rid of any...
Ashley has to ask for them by email right now, 'cause it's down, yeah.
Any other discussion? All right, so there's a motion and a second to rescind the 1989 version of GCB. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions?
Me. Okay. GDMD is from 1982, and that is the Support Staff Development Opportunities, and that is not in existence any longer, um, and Support Staff Development Opportunities are defined in the contract anyway, in the collective bargaining agreement, so that is one for deletion.
So, motion to rescind, uh, GDMD.
For a second? Any discussion? All in favor of rescinding policy GDMD, please say aye.
My only discussion on this is right now Carrie and I can't pull up those policies to make sure, we can't pull up anything on the New Hampshire School Board Association policy to make sure it's not a requirement in there anywhere.
I have it.
Okay.
Yep. It says recommended.
Okay.
And the only thing in the policy, it says contracts are designed to protect the interests of the employee and the district. Every permanent professional employee shall be required to execute a contract with the district. The contract shall be signed by the employee and the chairperson of the board. And that's been delegated to me.
Okay. Then I'm good. It's just so hard right now that we can't cross-reference. So I hate to get rid of any.
Ashley has to ask for them by email right now because it's down. Yeah.
Any other discussion? All right. So there's a motion and a second to rescind the 1989 version of GCB. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Me?
Okay. GDMD is from 1982, and that is the Support Staff Development Opportunities. And that is not in existence any longer. Um, and Support Staff Development Opportunities are defined in the contract anyway, in the collective bargaining agreement. So that is one for deletion.
So motion to rescind, uh, GDMD.
For a second? Any discussion? All right. All in favor of rescinding policy GDMD, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Me?
Uh, GDO is Evaluation of Support Staff. That was looked at in 1982. Um, there is a New Hampshire School Board's sample policy that hasn't been looked at since 2006. Um, so that I can read it if you want me to, since I have it in front of me. It's just a paragraph.
True.
Um, "The performance of each non-certified person shall be monitored throughout the year. The employee's immediate supervisor is responsible for a formal written assessment of the employee's performance based on blah, blah, blah." That's also in the collective bargaining agreement for the paraprofessionals.
I was just going to ask that.
That's also recommended, right?
And, yes. And it's in the, it's in the collective bargaining agreement for the paraprofessionals that they have, are evaluated.
Right in it. This policy.
This policy says right in it, this policy may be superseded by a collective bargaining agreement. So my only question though is, you know, because we, there are employees like a, you know, cafeteria workers or custodians. Does, does this in any way impinge on any supervisory ability on non-collective bargaining employees by, by not having this policy?
It does not.
Okay. Then I'll make a motion to rescind the old GDO.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All right. All in favor of rescinding policy GDO, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Me?
All right. Next one is IJOA-A. Um, and there's also a B. Those two are guidelines for field trip chaperones and directors of field trips. And I did, these are from 1987. There's no School Board Association policy, um, for such a thing, but I did, um, talk to the principals. We didn't meet this week, um, about their guidelines. They haven't placed, someone had asked me what those guidelines were. So I think I got one from Dan, but we haven't worked on that yet. I will get them and bring them to the board, but they are not in the school policy manual. So if you.
Oh, table these two then?
Yes. Yes. Is that okay, Carrie? Yes. And we'll move that, keep that on the. And then JOA. How am I going to order here?
I K F C?
Oh, yeah. I got missed, sorry. I had it in my packet too. And I don't have JOA in my packet for whatever reason.
Um, okay.
FC. Oh, here it is.
It is alternate diploma for students with SCG, uh, significant, significant cognitive disabilities. So we'll take that up.
It got, yeah, it got missed from the agenda. So we'll get that back on.
That we don't have a copy of, so we'll move that forward.
JOA?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's from 1988 and that's directory information. Um, this is not a school board sample policy because this is covered under FERPA. So it's on the student protection, um, policy. So you don't need a separate policy for directory information necessarily. Um, and directory information announces, and that's, it's required to be in the school handbook as well to let people, parents know what you consider directory information. And that's under FERPA, um, which is like the name and address of a student, um, informing parents like, hey, this is directory information, which means we can release the names of our students. So, um, so that was on the agenda. So we can take action on that, right?
Yes. So I'll make a motion to rescind JOA from, uh, 19, vintage was that 88?
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. Any discussion on that one? All right. All in favor of rescinding policy JO-A, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Well, that felt nice.
Yeah.
All right. So, uh, we'll expect DIA next time and we'll move in a couple other ones forward. All right. Uh, so that brings us to agenda item number 11, which is our second public comment section. So we've got 15 minutes if anybody wants to contribute. Looks like a no. So move on to number 12, informational items. Do you have any informational items, Patty? I do too. I forgot though. As long as that's not Highland Games Weekend. Um, cool. Uh, I have one too, just a status update. Um, I did hear back after the signatures that I got last time, um, the application was submitted and the schoolhouse grant thing is on the calendar for the governor and executive council. Uh, do you remember what it was? It's next week. I think it was like May 13th, the 10th, sometime soon. Um, so we should, we should hear unless the meeting gets pushed for whatever reason. Um, in the next week or two, we should, uh, get approval for that. So keep you in the loop. So that's good news. Um, and with that, the board does have need to go into non-public session in accordance, oh, okay. Okay. Um, okay. So the board has need to go into non-public session in accordance with New Hampshire RSA 91-A, colon, three, Roman numeral two, small letters A, B, and K. A is the dismissal, promotion, compensation, or disciplining of an employee, or the investigation of any charges against him or her. B is the hiring of any person as a public employee, and K is consideration by a school board of entering into a student or pupil tuition contract authorized by RSA 194 or RSA 195-A. Uh, on a roll call vote to enter non-public at 8:25. Carrie?
Yes.
Amy?
Yes.
Melanie?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
And Emma S. So we'll pause for a second.